And we want to recite the scripture and then get in the pledge. Before we do, I'm going to have a moment of silence. We all know that conservative commentator Charlie Kirk was assassinated recently and I want to have that moment of silence in silent prayer for his family. Had a wife, had two young kids, certainly a tragic thing, something that shouldn't happen in United States of America in my opinion. So we'll do that and then I'll lead us in the Lord's Prayer. So let's have a moment of silent prayer. Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, and thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory forever. Amen. Bishop Penner, would you lead us in the pledge?
Whereas it is as it is applied, have you not seen the states of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all?
Now I'll call this meeting to order. First order of business is a roll call. Commissioners, would you please mark present? Hey, Madam Clerk, would you announce the number of present?
Twenty-four present, one absent.
Hey, we do have a quorum. Now, we're moving on to the next item of business, which is consideration of a proclamation honoring our former highway superintendent, Mr. Jonas Smelser, for his service to Sevier County. And I will read this and then we'll have a motion in a second. It says, "Whereas Jonas Smelser, a lifelong resident of Sevier County and 1966 graduate of Young High School, has dedicated his life to service, beginning with his enlistment as a United States Marine serving in Vietnam, later continuing his military commitment with the Army Reserves until his retirement with thirty-two years of combined service. Whereas Jonas was first elected as Sevier County Road Superintendent in 1982, serving the citizens of Sevier County for forty-three years until his retirement in August 31st, 2025, making him the longest-serving road superintendent in the state of Tennessee. And whereas during his tenure, Jonas oversaw the transformation of Sevier County roads with over a thousand miles of county-maintained roadways now paved, ensuring safer and more efficient transportation for residents and visitors alike. And whereas Jonas is a graduate of the Leadership Sevier Class of 1999, recipient of the prestigious Pless Newman Award in 2021, and was honored as the Robert M. Wormsley Outstanding County Official of the Year in 2021, further reflecting his leadership and dedication to the community. Whereas Jonas is the beloved husband of Teresa for twenty-five years, proud father to Donnie, Sylvia, and Curtis, and cherished grandfather to Sailor, Lakin, Isaac, Alex, and Audrey. And whereas Jonas Smelser's leadership, service, and commitment has left a lasting legacy on Sevier County and will continue to benefit generations to come, now therefore be it proclaimed that we, Larry Waters, Sevier County Mayor of Sevier County and the Sevier County Board of Commissioners, do proclaim September the fifteenth, 2025, as Jonas Smelser's Day in Sevier County, Tennessee, and extend our deepest gratitude and best wishage to Jonas for his decades of outstanding service and dedication to the people of Sevier County. It is further ordered that the 1896 bell atop the historic Sevier County Courthouse shall ring a celebratory ring at 7:00 PM on this day to celebrate this occasion, so ordered this fifteenth day of September, 2025." I will now entertain a motion. Madam Clerk, if you'll move to the voting screen for the proclamation. I will entertain a motion in a second to approve the resolution, or the proclamation, We have a motion in a second. Do we have any discussion or questions concerning the proclamation? Okay, hearing none. Madam Clerk, would you please advance to the voting screen? Commissioners, would you please cast your votes? Did anyone like to change their vote? Hearing no requests to change of vote, Madam Clerk, would you please announce a vote?
Twenty-four yes votes.
Hey, it has been adopted unanimously and it is my honor to present Jonas for this proclamation. I ask you, Madam Clerk. This man, if you have a three second, come on up. Come on. I was wondering why she wanted to come down here today. I'm surprised. I think you're mistaken. Picture. Here's. Okay. We can do that. We can do whatever we tell. Let's do it. Ready? Let me say, Jonas has been a friend of mine ever since I met him in 1982. We worked together for some forty-three years and not just a good friend, but he's been a great county official. He's been a great road superintendent. He's had the confidence of the commission and the people, and therefore they were able to, he was able to get the resources that he needed and he used those resources well. And so I appreciate him. I appreciate his service to Sevier County and what he's done for the citizens over the years, and I know the citizens appreciate that as well. And Jonas, I'll give you an opportunity to say anything you'd like here.
Well, thank you. The truth of the matter is the commission has always supported me. I think one time I was for road, getting our roads changed from wide open spaces to a planning commission and everybody that developed bringing roads up to some kind of standards. When I took off, we had no standards. But anyway, along with that and getting rid of six hundred miles of gravel road, that went a long way. When I took over, we had about three or four old graders and five dump trucks that might drive single axes with nine hundred miles. Now we have over a thousand mile road. But anyway, it's the support from the commission and that's kept me in office and over the years, and I've tried to do my very best. And I said thanks to the citizens of Sevier County and the full commission. Thank you.
Okay, we're now moving to item number four, which is consideration of the minutes from the previous meeting. Madam Clerk, would you please move to consideration of those minutes? We have a motion in a second to approve the minutes. Are there any discussion or questions, additions or corrections on the minutes? Big nine, Madam Clerk, would you please move to the voting screen? Commissioners, would you please cast your votes? Before we finalize the vote, would anyone like to change their vote? Hearing no requests to change of vote, Madam Clerk, please announce a vote.
Twenty-four yes votes.
Minutes have been approved. Item number five, consideration of reports from various commission committees. Madam Clerk, would you please move the consideration of reports from the commission committees to the voting screen? We have a motion in a second. We have a motion in a second. Now, do we have any discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, would you please move to the voting screen? Commissioners, would you please cast your votes? Hey, would anyone like to change their votes? Hearing no requests to change of vote, Madam Clerk, would you please announce a vote?
Twenty-four yes votes.
Okay, the many minutes have been approved. Now we move to item number six, which is public comment on agenda items. We did not have any request for public comment at this time. Next one is a public hearing on rezoning items, and we have one rezoning item, and I will open the floor for public comment on that at this time. And if you, it is amending the zoning resolution for Sevier County by rezoning tax map seventy-two, parcel one fifty-three, from R2, high-density residential to C1 rural commercial, 405 Rainbow Road, and the Severable Planning Commission recommended against. Okay, that's interesting. So we will have, I will now open the podium for anyone that would like to comment on this proposed rezoning. If you just step to the podium, state your name, and you have three minutes to make a comment on this rezoning request. Do we have anyone in the audience that would like to make a comment? Yes, if you, anyone step to the podium. Please state your name.
I bought this property seven years ago, and since day one, I've been having real hard time because they cannot decide if it's city or county. Part of the property is county, part of the property is city. So I've been going, you know, to one office, to the other office for everything, and sometimes they tell me, I don't even know. And I heard a lady saying, just do whatever, I don't know, go to the city, go to the county. And at the end, they send me a bill for tax for the city, and I wanted to pay it, and they told me, no, don't pay it, because we're not sure if it's city. So they didn't let me pay it. So I've been paying just county. But anyways, since I bought this property, the last owner told me that was commercial, and the state, I've been trying to put septic, because they told me that they cannot give me sewer. I had thirty-two apartments in a lot of buildings, and I've been renting them as the other man, as the other owner, like the storages, and it's been a business since I bought it. And now they tell me that I cannot do business, and I would like you to help me out in this one and let me keep renting in as business, because I don't know what I'm going to do to all these people, you know, that they're renting from me. I even have a food truck since I got there, and people come from me, and I would really appreciate you can help me and let me rent them as a business. Thank you.
Do we have anyone else in the audience that would like to comment? Hearing none, I will close this portion of the public hearing, and now we'll move on to item number seven, which is election of the chairman for the twenty-five, twenty-six year, which will go through August 31st. Yes? Do we have a nomination of myself? And we have a second. Do we have other nominations? Hey, hearing no other nominations then, we will proceed to a voice vote, since there's just one nominee, and all in favor of re-electing me as chairman, please indicate so by saying aye. All opposed likewise. Ayes have it, and I thank you for electing me as chair, as Commissioner Delius says, for the last time after forty-eight years. I appreciate that. It is an honor to serve as chairman of this group, and I look forward to working during the next year. I said, I was telling Brian earlier that after forty-eight years, I missed one commission meeting, and that was in 1981 in the fall, and that was because we had a commission that I had trouble with, and I didn't go one night, and the next time I got a call from the chairman who said, if you'll come back, we'll promise to act better. And I told him I'd come back, but that was the only commission meeting I missed was in the fall of 1981 in forty-eight years, so I've been fortunate to be able to make most of those. And I appreciate your all's confidence and appreciate this commission, and look forward to the coming year and the progress we're going to make. So the next item of business is the election of chairman pro temp for Sevier County, Tennessee, and I will, for the Sevier County Commission, rather, and we will proceed to that, and I will open the floor now for nominations. Yes?
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second to nominate Commissioner Hurst for chairman pro temp. Do we have other nominations from the floor? We have a motion, nomination cease, and Commissioner Hurst be elected by acclamation. Do we have a second to that? We have a second. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing no discussion, all in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye. All opposed likewise. Motion is adopted, and congratulations Commissioner Hurst on being elected chairman pro temp. We'll now move to item number nine, which is consideration of resolution 2025-09-01, amending the zoning resolution for Sevier County, Tennessee by rezoning tax map seventy-two, parcel one fifty-three point zero zero, from R2 high-density residential to C1 rural commercial district, address 405 Rainbow Road, requested by Virginia Burden, and the Severable Planning Commission recommendations against. So, Madam Clerk, would you please move to the voting?
Can we get Mr. Temple come up and speak first before we do that?
We're going to do that. Once we get a, we have a motion in a second, and we'll, if you move to the, or you move to the voting screen, my, my computer's not working up here, my pad, rather. So, I have a motion in a second to, now. Mr. Temple?
Yes, sir. This is a piece of property on Rainbow Road, as you see there. It was actually zoned R2 when the zoning maps were created in 2006. It does not have sewer available and hasn't had sewer available in years. Several people have tried to hook it on, but the, what I understand is the sewer line out in Rainbow Road is too small to accommodate anything in there, so they have not, it has nothing to do with the moratorium we're under now, it's just not capable of taking any sewer. The, there's a couple of buildings in the back of the property that have drain fields. A lot of the other buildings have no wet place to put their sewage, and there's no, from what I understand from our environmental health department, there's really no other vacant land where you can put another one. There's really no way to expand what's there, and it is, I agree with the Severable Planning Commission's recommendation to deny this rezoning. So the resolution you have before you is to approve it, so the appropriate vote would be to vote no.
So the reason, the reason is because we can't have field lines?
There's nowhere to put field lines, and it's, there's not capacity in the sewer line out in the street. It was put in for some apartments, houses around on the other end of Rainbow Road, and it's full.
It's all disturbed or half-laid, is it possible?
It's all disturbed, or it's, 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 it's a mess. There's, a lot of it's been disturbed, and this is what the environmental health department has, there's two drain fields that are for a couple of houses in the back, and what's left is already got buildings on it, or the land has been disturbed where you can't put another drain field on it.
Well, why is it detrimental for us to zone it in the way the people want it, and then it would be up to them to try to get the sewer and for us not to try to make a decision on whether there's sewer available or not?
Well, it's a, it's a, you know, there's commercial businesses on this now that are operating without permits. They're actually on our complaint list, and we're taking that through the process, because they're opening businesses up left, right, and every day, and telling people they've got sewer when they don't have sewer. It's a real issue, and as far as our department goes, they're not in compliance. And my concern is if we open it up, if we rezone it to commercial, you know, they would then try to go in and put businesses in there, but there's no, and advertise it as commercial, but there's nowhere to put a drain field. And to, there's been a few businesses in the last few years, I'm talking about pre-mortarium now, let's not get into that part, that to, you would have to relay the line all the way from Carter Drive, pass this, around Ridge Road to upgrade the sewer, and there's really nowhere to put the line, because the right-of-way of Rainbow Road is very narrow. It, I've been told from the city's Severable, it's physically impossible to, or very difficult to put a new line in for that, and it maybe will require a pump station or two being repaired. So they're not inclined to do that, and now with the moratorium, until that goes away, you know, I don't think it'll happen. But I mean, in our point, from our recommendation, it needs to stay the way it is. If sewer ever comes available, then we could reconsider to rezone it to commercial till after commercial use.
Mr. Temple, I really don't understand the argument. All we've gotten, being asked to do is to rezon it.
Yes.
The utilities and stuff is nothing to us.
That's true. If it's rezoned to commercial, if they come in for permits or whatnot.
That's right.
We would have to deny it, because there's no way to put sewer.
That's, that's not, that's not our call, but the city's fixing to let about five hundred to a thousand go in up down there where the road ain't no wider than this. They don't, they don't have a plan on this, the city don't. If they, when they're, what they're fixing to let go in up there on that. So I'm going to be, I'm going to be for rezoning. That's not up to us to...
If you, if you choose to rezon it, the vote would be yes.
Then it's up to them.
No would be to deny it.
So that you can...
Yes.
Specifically in our zoning, what criteria does this property not meet in our Sevier County?
Well, to require, for it to be R2 zoning, it's supposed to have water and sewer. Well, that is true, and it was, the map was colored R2 back in 2006, so it's basically rezoned incorrectly, it has been since the beginning. Our zoning regulation has a provision in it that if there is a parcel like this that is zoned incorrectly, it falls back to the zoning district that, based on the utilities it has. So if it's, somebody were to build in there today, the density would be the same as it would be for R1. You have, you have water, but no sewer. If it goes to commercial...
My question specifically, under our orders, what qualifications does this not meet?
Well, they're trying to put commercial businesses into a residential zone, and they're not allowed. We've had several requests for commercial businesses to be built in here in the last few months, and there's businesses there without permits that are improperly there, and we have them on the complaint list, and we're working through the legal process on that.
Do we not have criteria for each of these zones?
Yes.
What criteria? My question is, what does, what does this not meet for the Sevier County? What criteria is taken in our zoning? Is this property not meet?
Okay, if you, if you rezone it to C1, the amount of businesses you could, you could put businesses in there, that's true, but the density you would be allowed would fall back to the utilities you have available, which would have to be, you'd have to have a septic and drain field system and a water supply. So the density would be very low, it wouldn't be, could not be high.
So right now, we've got a food truck on it, is that what's on it?
The storage buildings, which the man that owned it before me, he always rented it as storage buildings, and he had a, like a food market in that own building, and that's what I'm renting it by now, the storage unit, I have a food truck, and I wanted to take some men over there cleaning cars and putting things in, like on the windows. And that man that was before me, he had him as storage, cleaning for a lot, you know. Right now, I can't look at the toilets and the bathroom out of, out of the window. I know they cannot give me no, no septic, no septic and no sewer. And I went to a meeting to get a sewer, and the state, the city said yes, and then the state said no, and then the state came, and they needed everything, and the state told me, business, you have to get a electrician, that is a business, and we have a business license. They made this whole money, and I had to get a business constructor, I mean, to fix everything. It had, it had to be everybody, you have to be a business. And I had to put, like, roof, barbed roof for business, and I had to put doors for business, and I had to put a exit for everything they told me to do, the state, I had to fix everything as a business.
Okay.
That's why, you know, I'm renting as a business, because the person that I owned it, he had it as a business.
My, my question is that in 2006, when we adopted zoning, was there a business on this then?
I don't, I don't know the answer to that, sir. It was, it was marked as an R2 zoning in '06.
Let me ask this question, Mr. Temple. You said that there was, that the county was pursuing violations...
Yes, sir.
...on this property. Specifically, what violations are you talking about?
There's several food trucks on the property that stay there all the time. There's actually some, we noticed some, like, concession booths that are set up in physical buildings selling food and other items, and none of those have any permits whatsoever through our office. And we've had several, I've had several requests from people wanting to put businesses in there in the last few months, and I've explained to them that, you know, they can, it's not zoned for businesses, that's on, you know, and the fact there was nowhere to hook their sewer up, and most of them chose not to, not to go through with it.
So, so, in the legal process, where are you at in that? I mean, is it, is it in court?
We have not taken it to court yet, as we're trying to figure out what the next best avenue is when we get to a point, whether to go to Chancery Court or try to come up with a better, another way to deal with our complaints that people do not comply.
And we decide whether it's the county or the city?
There is a little, according to the maps I've seen, that little purple area down at the front, there may be a half a building in the city. Bulk of it is in the county.
So is the planning commission the one that cited them?
Yeah, the planning department, through our, you know, that's our job. We have, somebody files a complaint for, you know, illegal building or operating without a permit, we look at that, we deem that there's a complaint, and we've looked into it, we actually got, risk complaint was... We actually got, there was a complaint with one of our commissioners.
So then your plate, well, the planning department's place to cite them and take them to court?
Yes, sir.
And that's what you're...
We're headed that way.
...doing right now.
Yes.
But that really doesn't have a bearing on...
Not really.
On the physicality of buildings, what they can do with this property.
Right now, they shouldn't be operating, but, you know, if they get sewer, then a lot of that could go away with proper permits.
Can you not operate a food, a food trailer without a sewer and stuff like that? I mean...
You can unless it just stays there all the time. I mean, that's the, that's the challenge. We've got a lot of food trucks that don't ever move.
Well, I mean, but if they're on wheels, they can move. So I mean, if you're, if they're stationary, not on wheels...
The food trucks, it wasn't the issue, it was the stationary stalls that they were putting, attempting to put some businesses in that really we worried about.
But I mean, so we, and I guess my question is if, if they have a trailer on the wheels that can be moved in and out, in and out, in and out, would that not be...
We allow those in...
...zoned commercially, it should be able to...
They can, they can operate those in a commercial zone.
They can operate the food trucks on it?
Yes.
Okay.
Call for a question, Mr. Chairman. See, I'm getting ready to recognize that unless we have another, anybody else need to ask a question? Okay, no more questions. Thank you, Mr. Temple. Madam Clerk, would you please move to the voting screen? Recognize the call for the question. Let me explain. A vote yes is to approve rezoning this property. A vote no would be against rezoning this property. Severe Plan Commission has recommended against the rezoning and our planner has also recommended against it. So that's, that's where we're at, I think, based upon the fact that we have several outstanding issues. Okay, commissioners, please cast your votes. Hearing no request to change your vote, Madam Clerk, please announce a vote.
Nineteen yes, five no.
It passes because it takes 17 votes, takes a two-thirds majority to pass the rezoning, so it passes by two votes. So it has passed. Thank you. We are moving on to the next item. Consideration of Resolution 250902 to confirm the appointment of commissioners to committees of Sevier County Board of Commissioners. You have a list of committees there. We, my office sent out any requests to change. We did not receive any. This is the same list that we had previously. And so, Madam Clerk, would you please move Resolution 20250902 to the voting screen? We have a motion and a second to approve. We have a motion and a second to approve. Do we have any discussion concerning the resolution to confirm the appointments of commissioners committees for the coming year? Hearing no discussion, Madam Clerk, would you please move to the voting screen? Commissioners, would you please cast your votes? Anyone like to change their vote? Hearing no request to change the vote, Madam Clerk, would you please announce a vote?
Twenty-four yes votes.
Resolution been properly adopted. We are now down to notaries. Madam Clerk?
Forty-three notaries.
Please move the notaries to the voting screen for action. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the notaries. Do we have other, do we have any discussion on it? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, would you please advance to the voting screen? And commissioners, would you please cast your votes? Anyone like to change their vote? Okay, Madam Clerk, would you please announce the vote?
Twenty-four yes votes.
Twenty-four yes votes. Notaries have been adopted. We are down to other business. I have just one item you have in the packet, a letter from any of the residents in Blaylock Woods concerning short-term rental issues. And if you would, just review that letter, that is in your packet and in everyone's packet. Any other business to come before the commission?
Mr. Chairman, if I, if I may, I'd like to speak on the letter there that was sent to us by the residents of Blaylock Woods. And I first want to say thank you for these residents for sending this. I feel like Blaylock Woods is not the only subdivision in our county that probably faces this dilemma. I think our subdivisions certainly are important parts of each of our communities here in Sevier County. And I think preserving the values of those is important. Certainly would hope that Commissioner Pittner and the Planning Commission, along with Mr. Temple from the Planning Department, can look at this issue and let us work together to see what we can do to not only help these residents, but other residents in the county that may be facing this same dilemma.
Thank you, Mr. Valentine. Anything else under other business? We have a motion to adjourn, do we have a second?
I think we looked at this a handful of years ago, and it's, you know, subdivisions that have not ever had this, I mean, they're older subdivisions and they do not have this in their restrictions. Is there anything that we need to look at for the future of these old subdivisions about doing something about this? I mean, it's, there's a lot of subdivisions that, I mean, I've had a lot of calls several years ago about this over in the 8th District. I mean, you know, they've got people that's lived there all their life and then all of a sudden, here's a big party next door in a house that nobody knows them, nobody knows, I mean, they come for the weekend and just have big parties and, I mean, that's, I'm sure when these subdivisions were built, that was not the intent for these to go on an overnight rental. I guess, James, what I'm asking is there something we need to look for in the future
Well, Mr. Temple's coming up. I do have one person that, after we get through with other business and before we adjourn, has asked to speak under public comments on non-agenda items, so I'll recognize them when we get done with other business.
This issue that's been brought up is, is a serious issue. We've been looking at this and talking to the folks for probably several years. There was some state statute passed, the Short-Term Rental Act, which ties our hands somewhat on what we can do and can't do. I know, we could, we actually have been discussing this in our staff meetings with Brian, that we'll look at, probably early next year, looking at creating some zones in the county or modifying the current zones we have to where some will allow short-term rentals, others will not. The biggest issue is that, kind of going along with what we just talked about, is in the TCA that gives us the authority, Title 13, our enforcement arm is pretty short and pretty weak. Can find them $50 a day, but I would have to go out and find, or cite them daily to make that stick. That's pretty hard to do. City of Pigeon Forge changed their R1 zoning to not allow short-term rentals, new ones. If you had one in there, you could keep it, but you could have no new ones. And the challenge they've had is there's new ones going into R1 zoning every day. And based on this TCA rules, I understand it, the only recourse you have is you go in at, after 11 o'clock in the morning when checkout time is, and before the 4 o'clock check-in, you cut the water off and put a sign on doors that says unfit for human habitation. Well, I think the commissioners up there said, because the person who's gonna get yelled at is not the owner that lives out of state or not the management company that, you know, here in town, or that is, it's gonna be the city. And if we were to do something like that, of course, the problem we've got is so much of our, you know, rental cabins don't have water, they've got wells. You can, I don't think you, by statute, you cannot cut off the power. So the enforcement arm is the challenge. You can send them a letter all day long, but if they don't agree with you and to stop, it's very hard to do. We're trying to figure out a way to do it. It's challenging, other places have tried to do it, and legally, it's challenging, but it is on our radar and that's something we're gonna look at the rest of this year and first of next year, so. And I've talked to the folks in Blaylock Woods, they've come to our meetings and we've had this same conversation. It's, it can be, we think it can be done, but how you go about doing it that sticks and be able to enforce it, it's, it's a challenge legally because our, the regulations I have limits our enforcement arm. Blaylock Woods is a weird animal. I think the restrictions are by the lot. There was no subdivision of Blaylock Woods. It was done on a map and every lot was sold by meets and bounds. There was never a subdivision that recorded. It was done by meets and bounds and the restrictions are, I've been told, they're different on one lot to the next.
Do you have laws that house certain conditions that are in, making neighborhoods have certain restrictions that they can collect and amend?
Yes, we have done that, we've told people that. Again, if they, if you amend your restrictions, if there's one there today, that's grandfathered. But then if the one comes in tomorrow, that means the community then has to go to court and, you know, go through the legal system and that can be a challenge. And the Blaylock Woods, because each one is its own entity, everybody in some of them have to agree to change, to create a new set of covenants and restrictions that would govern the whole neighborhood. And I don't, I don't know how that would work. You couldn't, if it, the whole subdivision's covered, you could, there's probably language in the, in the covenants and restrictions how to amend them. Of course, I, I've heard of some covenants here that they think they have them, but technically they expired 10 years ago because they didn't vote to continue them. You know, if you don't, if you don't use them and don't look at them, they can expire. Some of them, some of them renew without you doing anything, some of them expire if you don't do anything. That would have to be on a case-by-case basis.
James, I have one question real quick. Like on our R1 zoning, R2 zoning, is it not stated in there that these are R1 residential zonings is what it says?
Yes, but under, under the state law, a short-term rental cabin is a residential dwelling.
I'm just, I just...
That's, that's state law, I didn't change it.
I don't see how a...
They, they charge commercial taxes now, they charge a commercial water bill, but they are still a single-family dwelling with some extra requirements.
I mean, I just, that's why I was wondering, I just thought maybe since it was saying R residential...
We get, we get calls in our office multiple times a day about, can I do a short-term rental here? We, our answer is we have no restrictions for or against short-term rentals in the county. And as of right now, we don't.
Is, is that not, Blaylock Woods not in the city?
No, it's in the county.
Is it? The city goes around it?
It goes around it.
Okay.
Well, Mr. Temple, thank you. One more thing, I mean, I know grandfathered in, grandfathered in, I mean, there's nothing we can touch there, but if you could do a little study in there for something we could do in the future...
We have been...
I guarantee you, every one of us got a call about this in the past and...
We get them continuously.
Yeah, I guarantee your phone rings off too, but it's a...
It's, we're looking at it, we've done, I've done some research, trying to figure out the way to go it. I think we've had some conversations with CTS on how to do this, but because of the Short-Term Rental Act, some, in some ways, our hands are tied. But we'll see what we can do.
Something's gonna have to go through legislation for that.
Yes, sir.
I think it's kind of, kind of clear to a lot of us as well is that you're basically having a business within a subdivision.
Well, there's no question about that, but under the building code, it's still classified as a single-family dwelling. Short-term rental, just for y'all, short-term rental...
Being used as a business is what it is.
Short-term rental is, you rent it for less than 30 days.
When it comes to the state, the VRBO lobby is very strong in Nashville and they have taken on this issue across the state, so it's, state perspective, it's difficult to regulate. It's difficult to regulate here from a local perspective in that county is so large and how do you, you know, you can go subdivision by subdivision, but how many zones you're gonna have? You're gonna have a numerable amount of zones and how are you gonna enforce in each zone? I mean, you have, we can do Blaylock Woods, but then, say you have 15 more subdivisions and six of the 15 wanna have VRBOs and the rest don't, so you're gonna have a zoning map that's got 75 zones in it and how are you gonna enforce that across the county? I mean, it's a complicated issue and certainly we are, I think we all sympathize with the folks in Blaylock Woods and these other, as somebody called them legacy subdivisions about, about this. The question is how to get to where we want to get and I think that's what...
I relate one incident, I was told there was apparently a subdivision in the valley, Wards Valley, that we're looking at amending their covenants and restrictions to not allow short-term rentals. And apparently the sentiment within the development was pretty strong, enough to vote it and pass it. And apparently one of the property owners in there, local property owner, was talking with an appraiser or something one day and he said, now you realize if you all pass this, your property values in your subdivision's gonna drop about 20% because it's now not available for sale as a short-term rental. And the next meeting they had, it was, 30% were for it and the rest of them were against it, so it didn't, it didn't go anywhere.
We appreciate you continuing to look into it, Mr. Temple, if you would, and see what you can bring back to us.
The last staff meeting we had, the vice mayor put that on my list, is number two, so.
He's a good man.
Okay, I'm now, is there anything under other business before we go on? We have one request to speak here. If not, I'm gonna recognize Deborah Bowden?
Yes.
Oh, Dean, oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, the IFC code, I understand that Sevier County does not adopt the D append... Okay, the IFC code, I understand that Superior County does not adopt the D appendix D, which states that you have to have two drives in a development if they have over thirty houses. I understand that. However, the only entrance that we have is very poor view as far as trying to get in and out. We just recently had a bad accident on September the ninth, and I'm passing some pictures around so you can see that. It's very hard for people to get in and out when you've got a lot of people there at the entrance, police cars and all of that. But if you can see that truck got T-boned, the car that hit it popped over the hill, and when it did, that black truck was turning into our development, which he couldn't see what was coming, he didn't take time to look, actually. But the orange car that you see in the picture has T-boned it, and it hit it really hard on that right side. If anybody had been sitting on that right side, they could have got killed or paralyzed. So my plea to you, please, I need a yea or nay. If you say no, that you're not going to do anything about this, then I won't come back. But Hatcher Road, right down the road, ten, what is it, just not even ten minutes down the road, on the left, is a dead end, okay, and it has five houses in it. It comes right out at phase three, because we've got phase one, phase two in our development. Now they're doing phase three, which makes eighty homes, okay? Eighty homes in a house with one entrance, a bad, poor view of looking to see what's coming. But anyway, my request is to open that Hatcher Road up, there's like fifty feet of asphalt that you could add to it, and I want Donnie Adams to see these wrecks too. But I'm very, very concerned about the safety of our development, the safety of me and the children. I really do, really request that something be done, because Hatcher Road, like I said, comes in, if you take that, it comes right into the back of phase three. Perfect. It is only fourteen feet wide, I know, but you've got five houses there anyway, you know, and D.R. Horton Homes putting three more houses facing Hatcher Road on that same road. So I just don't understand what, I mean, I don't know, I don't know what we could do, but we need to do something, or someone's going to get killed. And I've done my part by letting you know, so.
I will say, Mr. Mayor, I own a property in this subdivision as well, and it is a problem. The streets are too narrow, and for them to put that third phase in there was just more ridiculousness on top of what was already difficult and a safety issue. I think we've had instances of fire trucks, emergency vehicles trying to get down the street, they have to weave in and out of the vehicles that are parked on the narrow streets, and I really believe that if we had an issue at the back of the subdivision, especially now with this third phase, people would not be able to get out in a reasonable amount of time. And so I do think that having that entrance exit on that other street would have done a lot of good, and as she stated, we, for whatever reason, do not adopt the ordinances that they recommend for the fire codes, to where we would have required D.R. Horton to have that other entrance for a safety reason. And so, obviously, we've seen this happen over and over again, that it is a safety issue, but I don't know if it's too late on this, I would like to say that I'm hopeful that we can still change something and put that other entrance in, but I would also say for the future, why are we not adopting that, and why can we go ahead and adopt that for future subdivisions so that this doesn't continue to happen?
Well, I'm not speaking for Mr. Temple, but we've discussed this in the Planning Commission at least twice. Ms. Bowden came to the Planning Commission, and I believe it was Chris Jenkins was explaining some reasons why we didn't adopt the state's rule about having to exit in a subdivision that way, so.
I understand that.
Yeah, it would be good to hear from Chris sometime, but it's something we're looking at, I think, where I'm correct in saying that, Mr. Temple, and it's on the Planning Commission's agenda, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, that concludes our business. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. We have a motion, do we have a second? We have a second, all in favor of adjourned, please rise, we're adjourned, thank you.